Hey. You have a. You have five, it looks like.
I got six. Nine, seven, so I can't say it's. That's right. Free online through here.
Yeah, never mind.
I take two, both shoes on.
No, I, I missed, and I'm sorry, I, I'm, my bad. Okay, I'm a slacker.
So it is seven oh three. And we will start the March nineteenth. Meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. The first order of business is to review the agenda for additional removals adjustments. I did notice. Uh, late in the game that my times are like whacked, but no, I don't man, I don't think you need to take an hour and five minutes for a public comment, but. I think. I think, uh, given this agenda, we probably could shoot for eight o'clock here. Shannon has made a comment that item C underneath four. Update for the hazardous minute hazard mitigation plan steering committee that have not met, so we will strike that from the agenda. We have a minute tapered?
No, I, she'll do it from the video.
Okay. Um, is there any other? Uh, comments or things to talk about as far as the agenda is concerned? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to public comment. Any public comment?
You mean?
Hearing none, we'll move on to continuing business. So we had. Uh, started talking about. What to do for next steps? Uh, for our work. And, uh, the list that was captured was, um. Keeping in mind the implementation action plans in the town plan. We talked about mobility access to the downtown stores. Considering accessibility to be a draw, walking paths along the river. B T N no network pros and cons, increasing housing opportunities, this housing size. Bristol needs, or is it providing relief for the area? Or the region? Ensuring density is not detrimental. How to integrate commercial and light industrial? Incentivize small houses. Potential use of an intern. Addressing a viable economy. Permit notification process. Review residential density in R A one, R A two, and R A five zoning districts and Airbnbs. And then we left it that each person would go away and come up with up to three. Topics that they, um, out of that list or others for that matter, um. That they, um, feel are important for us to work on, um, going forward. Oh, by the way, uh, John. John is not, he's got some personal issues going on, so he won't be here tonight, and I think Fred has something going on tonight, too, so.
Bill just joined you.
Just backing up a little bit to, uh. Acknowledge that, and then we have Bill in there. So. So, um. I think. I, um. I started a worksheet. That I thought we could list out. And combine what we're thinking about. And kind of organize it and then work on prioritizing if that makes sense to everybody.
Want to share it for your machine?
Yeah.
And you should be able to share a screen.
Let's see it. Okay.
Nice.
So again, we've got partial, um. Look at people online, so if you have something. Um, not being acknowledged, just ask for acknowledgement. I started filling this sheet out a little bit, um. With. Stuff that Fred had brought up, um, just because Fred did email. His thoughts, and, uh, so just to. Get a placeholder for Fred. I did put his comments, he had two items that he was looking to, um. Thought that were worthy of topics to work on. I also put a column on the sheet on how we are going to implement. Obviously, whether it be a zoning thing, or if it be. More big picture and something that we want to work on integrating in the town plan, even if it's a little ways away. Or if it's a procedural thing, so. Um. I've laid, that's why I, I took advantage of Fred's comments to lay out the sheet. Um, so, does anybody? Want to take a stab at what, what they would like the, uh, what their three are?
Okay. Sure.
One retired friends here in a minute, so, um, looking at sort of the tasks that we've done, the housing study, um, I feel like. Most everything when we looked at that list of things that sort of had to be done in the next three to five years. With the housing study will give us a stronger database to make decisions by. Um, and I didn't know what we had here and. You know, if there's any kind of database here that keeps any of that, um. Or if we could work off, say, the voter, the voter logs and or the tax.
Yeah, so the groundless would be your best bet.
Would be the best bet, um. So I thought that would be a place to start to get that information, to gather it. Um, and this was back to, we talked about the intern and the fact that this would probably be time consuming and labor intensive. That, that would be helpful, um. And I didn't know if the other things we could look at was maybe school enrollment. To look to see, you know, that would tell us, you know. John and Jane Smith live at this house and they have. Little Timmy Smith in this, in third grade, he probably lives in the same house, he's or at least had an idea of actually who's living there. Um, that was just an idea. And that was sort of where I started. Um, my second thing was, was ties into what Fred had going on up there, which is review the other zones, um. Like we do with the village and the high density areas, um. Seeing the problem you did. Actually go out and inspect some of these areas that are sort of open right now that could be built on to see why they're not built there, whether it's ownership or whether it's. Landscape, um. So that kind of tied in with what Fred had to say.
Does, does what Fred have up your cover what? Your, what you're thinking about, or should we?
It's similar, that was, you know, he, he was a little more specific than I was.
Okay.
So how would, um, so the housing study would support zoning, I would say. Instead of zoning, is that?
Yep.
And then the other one is would be probably the same. Same as when.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Rob, do you have any?
Do you have a third?
Oh.
I have a third, yeah.
Oh, you do, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you said you were done.
Nope. Um, third one kind of tied in with the first two, um, which I thought could be. Is review of the municipal, uh, road standards. Um, that while we're making these. Maps and, and writing us all out, that we probably could incorporate that into both those two steps. Above the housing study and review of the other zones. Result. And I really didn't have everything, things I put there was some info that could be gathered via Google Earth. Most pictures are updated relatively frequently, so we might have an idea where. Private roads expanded and become more of a public road. More things that have been added since last time we drawn up any maps, which was two thousand twelve.
So the road standards would be also mapping.
Yep.
Mapping roads.
Those are my three ideas, like, these are, I looked at them, I thought.
So would that be the, the slide board does something with the road standards now, doesn't it, or?
Yeah, I mean. They set the road standards, but there's nothing that says that you couldn't. Um, provide them with recommendations. Especially with roads that you think that need to be upgraded to promote your vision of growth or not.
Okay.
Um, just looking through, I'm all unprepared, but, um, it was. I was gravitating towards the housing study, especially the piece about, um, the short term rentals. And if that's having any impact, because that's something that. Is. If it does become a problem, we'll quickly be chasing it too late, um, and then there's already a problem preexisting. Of grandfathered in uses and. Existing nondeformance, so that's something that we should get ahead of if there is any concern about it being a problem in the future, um. That, and also the notes about the designations related to future planning and. Use and grants of. Excuse me, be it downtown designated downtown or village center or any of the others out there. That may apply or may not apply to us and making sure that those are current best use, because I know that. Some of that stuff has funding implications and what you can get for grants and, and state aid, that sort of stuff.
Can you say that again?
The, uh, designations of within the village, be it downtown or village center or. Others. Related to future planning.
That's to fit in with state.
Yeah.
State designations.
Yeah.
That. Those would be both, would we be hacking through those to zoning? I think.
Um, I think, I think, I don't think it's just zoning.
No, select would actually enable, would be the one who would. Again, it would be your recommendation to the select board to pursue these based on your goals and vision. But the select board is the one that would have to pursue the actual designations.
Yeah. Like I know, I know some towns through what I've come across. Uh, day to day stuff have a designated growth center and they get. Funds from the state, I think, to look at how to. Build that out or promote development within there, various things like that, so I don't know if there's anything like that that would be helpful to Bristol. With the limited municipal services that are available.
Okay, well, it takes care of the room. Um. Slim. Have you got, what are your thoughts?
Well, yeah, hi, um. I gotta piggyback on the short term rental thing, uh, that was number one on mine, and, and that goes along also with the. Housing study, I thought a housing study to find out how many. Uh, domiciles, let's say, are. What even long term rentals, short term rentals, both. Uh, as. Those uses clearly. Take away a chance for somebody owning a home. And I don't know what we could incentivize. This somehow, if it was being within our power, I don't know. But I. Did recently come across a statistic that actually in America. Uh, there are more, there's more domiciles per capita than there ever has been. So the problem is that. Like myself, landlords own these buildings and then make money off their money, and people don't get a chance to. Own these properties, and I think that's a problem that I don't know if we can deal with, so that's in my mind. Looking in the long term to truly affordable housing, the ADUs, you know. Nine hundred square feet is not that small of a house, so I'm interested in. Uh, incentivizing. Even much smaller homes for a good slot swath of, uh. People which are young or old or maybe divorced and traveling nurses and it goes on and on. Because we've seen how it's. Difficult for Bristol to actually find workers. And, you know, workers in some of these. Stores and such don't make all that much money, so I think a much more affordable housing would, would be great. Um, also, it's been talked about, I think both the. Hmm, communication notifications when somebody's doing a project could be a lot clearer. To the neighbors or a bigger sign out front, I don't, I don't believe that small P works at all. And, um, and maybe talk about sanctions as well on people, it just, how do we, how do we enforce our rules best? Those are the ones I was thinking about, thanks.
Okay. So affordable housing. That's sort of a zoning thing. I think. And then the enforcement, the sign thing is.
The town plan too, right, all the housing stuff would tie, I was, tie into the plan as well.
Yeah. Then the enforcement, is that? Procedure, or is that's not necessarily zoning review, is it?
Yeah, it's zoning.
Is it zoning?
Yeah, there's sectioning zones.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, this. Melissa.
Yep, um, I'm with Slim on the, um, affordable housing and. Possibly a way to facilitate or encourage, um. A property owner. Allowing like a small, a small home community, um. You know, that, would you had on the list there four hundred to six hundred square feet? You know, it could be a little bigger than that, but. I definitely think that is, um. If, if it was done right, it would certainly be. A fitting here in Bristol, I think. Um, the other thing is, uh, it, would we address? The, uh, accessibility, uh, to. If we could ever become in compliance with eight, the, um. ADA, or is that, would that be just our suggestion to select board like those other? Is that the select board thing?
I don't, we. I don't, I'm not sure how, how we would address. Address, we've had. In the town plan, we talked about accessibility, but.
Right. Well, I didn't know if it has ever been done, uh, any kind of whatever you would call it, a survey or, or a, uh. You know, something to see if it's plausible or what we, what would be involved. To do that, to, to have accessibility to, to the, like, all the shops. Um, and the bank, well, the bank, I guess, has it, if. Yeah, but, um. You know, what, what, most of the, most of the places are not, uh. Not in compliance with that, so who, would the select board address that then?
No, the ADA, ADA compliance falls solely on the state of Vermont. Um, it's construction.
Okay.
Um, due Department of. Uh, Division of Fire and Safety, actually, I think is who does the enforcement on ADA. And so there's certain rules. If, depending on what modifications you're doing to a building, whether you have to bring it to ADA compliance, and what levels. Um, and, and again, those fall back at the state level.
So is that, if we wanted to do that, we'd have to have somebody from the state come in and take a look, or?
No, I mean, there, you, you could definitely do a study around where the deficiencies are. And then maybe. Try to figure out. Are there funding mechanisms out there? That, the, the funding side of it would fall back on the select board. But the.
Uh-huh.
Trying to find out the information of. Is it a, how many, how many buildings are we truly talking about? Or are we talking about buildings or just the town infrastructure that we can affect with the walks and crosswalks and? That in town facilities.
Yeah.
Close to.
Well, I'm talking about accessibility to all the buildings downtown, and we have it at. Holly Hall, because we have the elevator. There, but. You know, there's, there's m- most of the shops on North Street until you get to, uh, the yarn shop. Don't comply.
I think there might also be opportunities when it is time to do things like work on the sidewalks, right? Um, to look at, you know, if we're funding that anyhow, can we consider ADA compliance? Is there an opportunity to do something?
Um, yeah.
You know, for that matter, like, is that something that grant funding can help us to do?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we know those questions, but determining what we would need to do. To create compliance would maybe be a first step.
Yeah, that would, that would be, make the list of stuff, you know, that I would like to see, just to. Make a start to see what we can do. Um, and the other thing, the third thing that I had, um. Or I thought of was, what can we do to, um. Give people incentive, uh, either landowners or the, the homeowners, I guess, would be landowners to, um. Basically landscaping to use the natural. Uh, you know. Like to build, to, to, to landscape in a way so that the water that's needed can come. From rain, I don't know if there you can gather rainwater for. For gardening here. Um, but just to keep it more so that people aren't, you know, have these great big. Lawns and they're spending all this money watering it and all the water to water it. And I didn't know if that's something. That we might. Look at to, to give, be able to give some incentive and. For people to grow other plants and grow. You know, natural plants and trees and things. So it's just not all these big green lawns.
You know, again, I think we, our, our. Our means of being able to affect. Uh, influence changes through the town plan and.
Right.
Through zoning more specifically, to some lesser degree. Recommendations to the select board, but I don't, you know, that's. I, I'm not sure how you. How you would in, we as a planning commissioner would affect.
Yeah.
And unless you, unless you have some way. That you think that it should be implemented.
I, that's the thing, I don't know, I just wanted, you know, is that something we can look into and see if that's. Possible as, as more, like, if people sell their land or whatever, and the more homes are built. Out, uh, that. You know, i- it's just not stripped down. I mean, I don't know what's going on with all the tree cutting on one sixteen.
So, so let's get that out in the open right now, Melissa, that was, that was storm damage.
Uh-huh.
Johnson had to go, they lost almost eighty percent of the trees that were in that grove.
Oh, wow.
They cut them down, there were white pines that were way aged. They've, they're hearing it decimating and then replanning spruce, which are a better tree for that environment, so.
Okay.
Uh, we're getting a little bit out.
So, yeah, it looks terrible right now, but.
I just, I just didn't know what was happening, because I, it just happened to be when I. Drove through there, probably, it was just. Looked like a bomb went off, which almost did, I guess, with the storm.
But I'm, Melissa, I think realistically speaking, you raise a good point. But I think the only way that we could ever. Do anything about that would be to revisit our zoning regs, right, and to say if you are. Altering your property in a significant way, or you have land and you're going to develop it that didn't have anything on it. Then we're going to ask you to meet certain additional standards that have to do with. How you are landscaping that, because we care about. Water as a resource collectively in the community, but I don't think we can. Write it in because it's nice, I think it would have to be using the, the available means that we have to address that. If we feel it's important, it would have to be a zoning regulation. And that, okay, if your property that you're developing, you know, because it's, you know, like, a new single family home on this acre lot. And part of, you know, what you need to do, given where it is, is. To come in and present how you plan to. Relandscape or maintain as much as possible to prevent runoff, conserve water, et cetera, because we've determined in our town plan that water as a resource. Needs to be managed very, very carefully, because we don't have enough.
And to avoid erosion and unnecessary erosion and just, yeah, a whole host of things, I mean, that's, I, I think I would. I personally would think we could look at that. And just see. You know, see maybe what other small towns have done and, and. You know, the like.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
Nope, I did three, so.
Pretty dead, I, okay, one, one, most of it, so the ones I've got for you are the downtown accessibility and low ends. In landscaping, low, low impact landscaping.
Yeah.
The third one?
Um, the, the small homes, like. Possibly having small home communities.
Right, the same one as unidentified.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's see, who's next, Bill?
Thank you, Kevin. And, uh, also Melissa, uh, the. Uh, low down on one sixteen was. Exactly as. As was, uh, explained. That we had tremendous damage of that plantation forest. And it was just like a, a, um. A pile of matchsticks pretty much after the wind came through. And. It was best to. To keep the wood from rotting because. Uh, pine is very vulnerable to. To when temperature gets warmer, and it was all pine. So we harvested it, and now we're trying to make it look better by taking out the old stumps. And then we'll, we'll plant some strews there, so. We're doing.
Sounds good.
Best we can with the tough situation.
Yeah, so I, I, I thought it might have been because I saw the other damage around it. And I figured it must have got hit pretty hard.
Yeah, yeah, it must have been just in the wrong place at the wrong time.
Yep.
Thank you for your patience. Uh, Kevin, it seems to me that, uh. Near or at the top of my list would be. Ways to build our. Tax base. Principally through. Uh, enterprise. So that we have more tax revenue without raising our tax rates. That would be. Number one for me. Uh, secondly, I do think we should explore ways we can increase opportunities for. Home ownership. And of course, there's many ways that could be done, but we should think about that. And then, um.
So would that fall into the category that's already been discussed about? Affordable housing and incentivizing? Housing, or is it a little bit different?
No, it, it would fall under that heading, although my. Uh, sometimes affordable housing. Um. Emphasizes rentals. Uh, as, or, or both, my emphasis is on ownership.
Okay.
And. For a th- third one. Um. Just exploring the. The. Ways we can. Um. Make our school system. Work more efficiently. Whether that's by. Um. Combining schools, that wouldn't be anything you'd know anything about, would it, Kevin?
Mm-hmm.
I. But combining schools or combining grades. Combining schools or combining grades. Uh, somehow we gotta get our. Our cost of education. Closer to the. Other states, especially when we're running deficits. Of this size in Montpelier. And Washington DC, we won't leave them out of it. We gotta use the resources we have more efficiently and more effectively.
Okay. So that one, who would, what, what would be the implementation? How would we implement that?
Can we start assigning texts to the school board?
That's what I was just gonna say, that's a school board task.
Well, we'll get, we'll get our torches and pitchforks and march down to the. School board and then on to Montpelier and then on to Washington DC. How about that for an implementation plan?
I'm, I'm biting my tongue and I'll continue to do so.
Only for a little while longer, Kevin, then you can say whatever you want. Well, I don't know how we'd implement that, but it'd be worth thinking about. Maybe there's. Something we could. Do to foster and nurture and encourage. Perhaps more families. I, I don't have any immediate ideas as to the. Uh, student population or family population. But that's part of it, and then the. The planning of the school facilities is another, and I recognize that's not our immediate jurisdiction, but then. If you think about it, very little is. We're just coming up with ideas and. And guidelines and guardrails and. And maybe it could be helpful. To the school boards as they make their decisions.
So the previous two, number one and number two of yours would. Be a zoning activity or zoning review, I think. Is that?
Very, very, uh, that same sensible.
But maybe. Some of that might even be town plan.
Yeah.
So, uh, you. Mayor may not have missed out on what we, what our task was, but do you have, uh, some thoughts?
I did my homework, Kevin. Uh, thank you. Yay. Um, so I think that, that, um, many of the things that people have already mentioned do resonate with me. Um, I think that ultimately, if we're going to try to create. Hang on one second, then I'm in a meeting. You gotta go, buddy. All right. I'm sorry. Night, night. Good night. Sorry.
All been there.
Yeah, um, so.
Twenty twenty flashback there.
He likes to, anytime he sees the camera, he's like, I'm gonna come say goodnight. Um, but I think that if we're, if we're trying to think about. Um, you know, increasing housing opportunities. And I do think that, you know, there is this question. Do we have enough housing to meet Bristol's needs, or are we meeting the needs of a larger community? I do think we are. I think Bristol. Is attractive to people, because it's much more of a town center than any of the other towns in the five-town area. You can walk to things, right? It's appealing to young families and to retirees and everybody in between because of that. Um, so in my mind, I think that try to think creatively about, you know, how do we create housing opportunities? How do we, at the same time, keep housing affordable, right? Um, and I think the key to that is incentivizing small homes. Um, I think one of the big distinctions that I think about a lot. Is that often, and I think we all see this, and I say this with zero judgment, it's just a, a reality that, you know. Is that I have some land, I had it in the village, I sold it, I subdivided it, and the, the development plan becomes, you know. However many septic systems, there are lots. And then the lots, the solution that's affordable right now, that seems simple and doable to people is, I'm going to have. A mobile home come in, put down. And it's great for me right now. I've retired here, so I'm living with my family. I think one of the problems with, with our mobile homes is that. They depreciate much more quickly in value. They don't bring in the, the tax. Um, revenue that a, an actual home on a foundation does, but I think it's really hard for people to think about. Building something, it's much more expensive. You know, I think so. Anything that we can do. To, to use whatever resources we have, I think including the possible use of an intern, but looking at, can we find? Creative thinking, sources of funding, create public resources. To make it so that if someone does have some land where they could do some housing, to do that. Creatively and more affordably and create homes on foundations that are small, therefore maybe a little more affordable to build. To own, right, or to rent, that then are attracting. People to live in the village, who are saying, well, it might be a little smaller, I might not have a garage, you know, I might not have my land. But I can afford to pay for this and I can live here, we get more kids in our school system, right, tax revenue. So I think. Those are the three I can repeat if you want, Kevin, right? But it's.
So make them down into three here.
Yeah, so increasing housing opportunities, right?
Yeah, okay.
Um, and incentivizing the small homes, right? And then I think maybe the way I would put about it is, is maybe that's, that's the potential use of an intern. In the sense that I would like to be able to research opportunities to help people. To actually create. A home that they are either going to build and sell or for themselves, or they're gonna rent out, that is small. That is economizing where possible, right? And creating a housing stock that's going to continue to be worth money. Ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, right? Um, and to not go to the immediate sort of, okay, the quickest, fastest, most inexpensive way to develop this land. Right, is the smallest lot, lot size, individual septic, mobile home. I'm not saying that there's something bad about that. But long term, that doesn't add enough money to our property tax rolls, and eventually. Unless you're really, really, really careful taking care of that home, right? The mobile home isn't gonna be worth anything. It depreciates to zero. You can't get a mortgage on it, right? Someone can't afford to buy it from you, all those complications. So whatever we could do to research making, building. Actual small homes, right, that might share a septic with the neighbors, right, to reduce the cost. To make it possible to build more and to build more densely that way.
So we've got that, that line nine here, I think it's. I'm thinking I'm hearing what you're talking about would be the same as that.
She just put it a lot better way than I did. That's. You put, you, you filled that out much better. But, yeah, I think the research is the, is the, is the key to find out what's out, what land is out there and who might be willing to do that.
Yeah, and I think. If you are someone who could sell some land, develop some land. To, to be able to provide you with some resources that you might not know about. How you could do so more affordably and ultimately, as the owner of that land. Right, walk away having made more of a profit, if that's what you're trying to do, and create something for the village that's sustainable. That attracts people, that makes people wanna stay here, right, wanna live here, um.
Okay. I, uh. Don't have anything. That's not already on this list. My, my thoughts have been along the lines of the, the. Probably folds into billing it, not necessarily, oh, and thought about the pa- tax base. I was thinking more about. Job or opportunities to have integrated businesses in. Um, in the, in town and, and promote, promote that. I also have been thinking about with the changing of the guard, if you will, with the zoning administrator, it'd be a great time. For us to. Review and at least to. Present what our concept of that. Position might be that would be beneficial to us as a commission. And, and the, the housing one is such a sticky widget, but, you know, we've. We, we are looking to balance. Housing here along with what's going on in Chittenden County. And, um, make it so that it's sustainable both for new. Property owners and existing property owners and renters for that matter. There's, there's a lot of rental property in, in Bristol. That could be positively or negatively affected, um. And it, it, it gets a bad rap sometimes, but it serves a niche of the market. So that needs to be kept in mind as well. So I guess.
Kevin, when you talk about the business, small businesses and integrated businesses, does that speak to what, um, regional planning had identified about? There was a, uh, attachment about.
Yeah.
What they might need to attract more and that sort of stuff, or?
Just so regional planning talked about it with our plan review, it was in the building neighborhoods booklet as well, the importance of having. You know, work, work, living relationships. So, I mean, that's. Um, all part of that, I think. And what, what that looks like, now, I don't know. Um, we, we've got. You know, business practice getting built out now. Um, but I don't know. How, um, for instance, ho- home businesses, small businesses in the neighborhoods. I think we, I think over, we tend to be over leery about somebody working out of their house. And I think that kind of is not in sync with this whole work live arrangement, so.
Yeah, once you start talking home business first, home office and the, the implications of that, uh, yeah, everybody, it's. Little, little more on edge about it.
But look at, look at something like, um, um. Oh, my gosh, I'm, the chocolate place, I'm losing my mind, I can't think. The chocolate. Place there where the health food store used to be. Oh, my gosh, I can't.
Farmhouse?
Farmhouse, where they started in their home and now, you know, it's a def- thriving. You know, business employing folks and, so, I mean, you know, I think starting businesses at home. If it can lead to, to something like that is definitely. You know, a good thing.
That, that's definitely a zoning change, because right now you don't allow.
Yep.
So, I guess, um, we've, we've got, um, I think we've narrowed, I don't know how. Much we've changed our list. Um, but I think we, we find it, honed it, and made it much clearer, some of the things we're thinking about. Um. I don't know, I had thought that we would do some rank, rank, um. Voting, if you will, on these issues to kind of flush something up. Um, but given the time. Um, I'm not so sure that maybe we take this list and walk away with it and. Do that at the next meeting. I mean, we don't have.
And it's also, uh, in all honesty, it, that's not the unmanageable of a list.
No, because there's quite a bit of it that's centered around housing and implications of that, be it. Affordability or impacts of housing and rentals and a couple of those topics came up a few times and, or are intermingled.
So maybe the thing to do is take and chew on it, see what can be. Group together.
Combine, tackled at once, maybe.
And who do we want to have somebody? Do that for us and present it, or do we wanna take and go off and? Kind of, everybody look at it and give their slants. Anybody?
Does anybody want to consolidate it and clean it up?
I think, I mean, my. Just on this would be, you do have a ton of overlap. And, but I wanna make, ju- but just listening to it, there was just enough. Uniqueness on some people's perspectives. That I, I really think it would behoove you to each do it on your own, so you don't lose that piece. That's part of the planning is. That creativity piece. That'd be my only two cents on that.
I think we were headed that way anyway, so. Didn't see hands in the air, so. Let's, uh, I will email this out. In the next day or so to everybody, and, uh, then you can, we all can noodle on it and. Um, craft it into what we want to group it or prioritize, how we wanna. Um, do it. And I think, I think, you know, um, Rob's exactly right, there's a lot of overlapping stuff. And sometimes, as I was writing down this, may not have kept everybody's. Comments, because I was thinking it's already in another spot. And to embellish on it would certainly make sense, so. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Good work, thanks. So. The next thing is administrative matters. We've got the minutes from our February meeting that needs to be. Oh, yeah, okay, I can do that. Thank you. Yeah. So we have minutes from last meeting, uh. We always, we always approve them because it's tradition, but we're actually acknowledging that they're accurate, so. Is there any errors or omissions with them? Okay, um, anybody opposed to approving them? Okay, takes care of that. Um, zoning administrator report.
Um, things are just starting to pick up, um. The winter slowed down, um, interest rates going up have also slowed things down. Um, as I've said before, my tenure as ZA is coming to a close. Um, we have an interview hopefully this week, the potential candidate, and try to get them on board as, as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Um, already noted, item C was gonna be dropped. The next, the next item is, or, April will be our organizational meeting. So at that point in time, um, there's a couple of things that will. Provide opportunities for us. We will be electing officers for the next year. I, um, have, this has been my third year as chairperson. And our policies and procedures say that you cannot hold that position. Or vice chair for more than three years in a row, so. That presents an, an up, a great career move for somebody. Um, the other thing is, at the organizational meeting is the time of year that. You can review and adjust the policies and procedures, so. Those two documents went out with this agenda and I'll send them out for next agenda, so. Um, there's that. Is there any, I think that's all there is there, unless somebody has any comments. So at this point, we'll take, um, public comment if there's any. Hearing done, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, any abstentions? Okay. We're done, that's a wrap, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good one, thank you. Bye.